All right, let's call to order the Saguac City Council's special meeting workshop for Wednesday, March thirty first, two thousand and twenty one. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before the clerk calls the roll, I just want to point out one of the open meeting law rules for virtual meetings wherein that each councilperson is to state what city, county, and state that they're in. So I know Chris is traveling, so I hope she does well with knowing where she's at at this point in time. So Erin, if you could call roll and have them state their city, county, and state, please.
All right, Mr. Dean.
I'm here from Sagatuck, Allegan County, State of Michigan.
Fantastic. Leo. Holly Leo? Does Holly not have audio receiver? Circle back. Garnet Lewis?
Yes, here, City of Sagatuck, County of Allegan, State of Michigan.
All right, Chris Peterson, now we're putting you on the spot.
Okay, I was so happy you called before we pass this. Chris Peterson, Howie in the Hill, Florida. I don't know the county.
Stanton?
I'm here, Sagatuck, Michigan, Allegan County, State of Michigan.
Perfect, thank you. And Truster?
I'm here in St. Petersburg, Florida, and I'll have to look up the county.
Okay, and back to Leo. Leo.
Looks like she's having trouble.
Audio issue. All right, Mr. Becken, I'm coming to you then.
Yeah. Douglas, Michigan, Allegan County.
All right, and then we'll check back on Holly later, I guess.
And I think Ken is in Hillsborough County.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I forgot. This is your, this is your country down here.
Was it one time?
Hey, how about Howie Hills then?
Yeah.
Got you on that one, huh?
You sure did.
Here comes Holly. Let's give her another shot. Maybe she'll be on this time. Holly, are you able to hear us? Ah, no, you're muted. Sorry, Holly, could you unmute?
I can, I can hear you fine. I couldn't hear anybody.
And I just need to know city, state, and county you're in.
You need to know what city, state, and county I am in. I am in Sagatuck, Allegan, Michigan, not in the right order of what you asked.
Hey, I don't care. Just so long as we get the info, I'm good. Thank you very much.
All right, we'll get better at that as time goes by. Okay, our roll is completed. Any agenda changes? Ryan, Erin?
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, agenda will stand as presented. Next order of business is a public comment portion of the meeting. Members of the public are allowed to address the council on any agenda item. If you're on the Zoom call, please unmute your mic, identify yourself, include your name and city of residence. So anybody wish to address council? Erin, see anyone there?
I do not see anyone.
Okay. One more opportunity for the public. Okay, you'll have a, there will be a second opportunity later in the meeting to address council after we get through our discussion items. We'll be on to discussion items. Ryan, first order of business, state of emergency continuation of virtual meetings.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is the reason for the special meeting, but we threw some other items on there just for fun. So related to the emergency declaration to allow for the virtual meetings to continue. State of Michigan had a sunset on the Open Meetings Act, which allowed you to meet virtually. So in order to continue to meet virtually, you have to declare a local state of emergency and list some reasons why you're doing so. And we had the attorney draft a resolution to that effect. Actually, the sunset was yesterday, so you had a little interim declaration that the mayor signed off on to allow this meeting to happen. So with that, we have the resolution, and the recommendation is to approve Resolution number two, one, zero, three, three, one, dash, A, as presented.
Do I have a motion from council? Holly?
I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution two, one, zero, three, three, one, as presented.
Second.
Okay. I suppose we say, should say dash A on that since that's so.
Pardon?
Yep, that's okay. Just for the record. Any further discussion? If none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Leo? Yes. Truster?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
And Becken?
Yes. Next agenda item, North Park Street change order and some additional projects. John Moxie from Fleece and Vine to break is also here today to kind of chime in regarding some of these items. Ryan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to your point, there are two change orders related to the North Park Street project. And then we have some additional projects which are technically change orders to the contract because we'd use the same contractor to perform the work, but they're not related to North Park Street. So let me quickly walk through the, through the change orders. The first change order, and I'm working backwards. So apologies for that, but change orders E three and E four are related to the water services on North Park Street. You know, before we did do the construction on North Park Street, we know that one of our mandates is to replace any lead water services in the city. We have about twenty years to do that. But given the useful lifetime of a roadway which could last fifteen to twenty years, we thought this would be a good time to do that exploration. So change order E three was for the investigative work to dig up all of these services, which luckily Cron could do in short order. So that change order is in the amount of eight thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars to perform that work. Good news is that there were no lead services discovered. And I can let John comment on that when he, when he chimes in. Change order E four and the amount of seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-two is to separate water services that are shared. One of our other requirements moving forward is that each home have its own service. So this would be corrective action to separate those shared services. And there were four homes that were affected by this. You know, two pairs of homes, so four in total. And I'll stop there and entertain any questions or let John Moxie jump in to correct anything I misstated there.
No corrections here.
Any, any council questions? Holly?
John, I just had one question. Under E two, I noticed that Allegan Street, it looks like it worked out to about three hundred and seventy dollars a square foot. And then on Holland, it, we did three hundred feet. It looks like it was about twenty dollars a square foot. So it just looked like a big discrepancy for about the same scope between Allegan and Holland Street. I'm sure there was an explanation.
Here, are you, so are you taking the fifteen hundred and twenty-five divided by twenty to get seventy-six dollars a foot?
Yes, and I'm not the best at math, but I just, I do notice a big discrepancy between Allegan and Holland, and I'm just wondering.
Yeah, yeah, you're exactly right. Your math is right on. It's about three times as much per foot to do the Allegan Street piece. And part of that is because it's such a short piece. They still have to mobilize. They still have to get traffic control up on a much higher traffic road. So that's, that's the main reason for that. Or on Holland Street, actually, in the way they're shown in my version here, they're reversed. The Allegan Street is the one that is more expensive. The three hundred feet. So I apologize. I think we had that wrong, and I'm not sure if we got that right in the version you're seeing. Let me double check. Okay, it's right in the version you're seeing, except that the description is backwards. So apologize for that confusion. That's, that's on our end. It's the Allegan Street work that is the seven thousand, four hundred and three dollars, and the Holland Street is the fifteen twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor, this is Chris.
Yes, Chris.
Following up on that, wouldn't they have to get out the traffic control on either one of them?
They, they do. For Allegan Street, the plan was to close that, just, just some simple barricades to close that one block. There are no drive approaches on that block. Whereas on Holland Street, they've got to keep it open to traffic the whole time.
Got it. Need a flagman. Thank you.
So this is Lauren, Mr. Mayor. So I guess I just don't have an explanation for Holly's question. Why is the Allegan Street so much more expensive than Holland Street?
Allegan Street is a much longer footage, and it doesn't show on here because it's, it's got the description backwards. So Allegan Street is three hundred feet.
Okay, that's, okay, I got it.
And I'm sorry, that's, that's on us. I thought we had it fixed, but it didn't look like it made it through.
Okay.
Yeah, and just in the price themselves, we reviewed the, the actual breakdown of the prices, and Cron has been very fair with us. I was even a little bit surprised in how low the numbers came in for the work that needs to be done there. So we feel comfortable recommending that the city move forward with this work.
And John, just one, one more question, and it's just, I mean, just going up and down Allegan Street, that was a brand new street, brand new sidewalks, brand new curbs, just a couple of years ago. And now we're spending an additional seven thousand dollars. It just seemed like that work should have been done when we were doing that. So now we're having to go back. Are we going to have to dig up the road, or how's that working?
Yeah, I knew that question was coming because it's a good one. So what, I don't know if this is a new condition that came about as some little change that the project created, or if it's always been like this.
It's always been like that.
The, the way I understand it is, is the water just kind of seeps out of that hill. And, and maybe it always did that, and nobody noticed it. And now that we have brand new sidewalk, it is that way, or maybe, I'm not sure. As I review what was done in that project, I can't come up with something that would cause a change in that one spot. Groundwater is weird, but I can't come up with anything.
Well, I, I think it's a seasonal issue. I don't think it's something that flows year round.
It does. I walk that street almost every day, and it's, it's always wet, and it just depends on if it's ice or if it's, you know, the spring when it's not ice.
Yeah, did you, did you happen to walk it like five, five, did it always do that or no?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. In, in that case, it is something that should have been incorporated into that project, and it just wasn't brought to our attention, I think. I don't know if city staff even really realized that there was an issue there.
Okay. I guess.
To the other part of Lauren's question, John, is this going to require a major disruption of the street to fix it?
No, it should just be, they're estimating two days that we would close that one block. They will have to remove two squares of sidewalk at each of two locations. So there will be four squares of sidewalk that gets removed and replaced. That's really the only additional cost to the city from if we would have done this originally with the project. A little bit of rework is, is all that.
So the roadway won't be affected?
Nope, nope. They, they won't have to get into the curb or the asphalt, just a couple of squares of sidewalk. And one other thing I should point out, that three hundred feet does a majority of that block. We didn't want to just do the one spot in case that it's going to, you know, move the problem or another problem's going to spring up. If, if we have them in there doing this, we feel much better just having them do that whole stretch.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, this is Chris.
Sure.
John, several years back when they did do it, I remember they put it all in, and then they had to dig it all back up, and the term they used was the soil wouldn't steal because of the clay. I don't know if that is contributing to this or not. That's all.
Yeah, yeah, that, that it's, it's definitely, you know, kind of the interaction of the water in the ground and what types of soil and where the sand lenses are that, you know, kind of water can move through versus where the clay is, for sure.
Do we have a construction date? Approximate construction date or time when this is going to happen, John?
Still looking at mid-April. They would, they would do this work at the same time as when they mobilize for Park Street.
The only point is closing the street now for two days is going to affect, you know, the school, you know, so you might want to just.
Yeah.
That's more for Ryan, I guess, that we got a clue in the school and.
Emergency services. Yeah, we have a list. Yep.
Okay, good. All right. Nothing further?
Mayor, this is Garnet.
Yes, Garnet.
Yeah, motion to approve change orders E one dash E four for the construction contract with Cron Excavating LLC.
Second.
Okay. Before we put it to a vote, I do have another question regarding E four. The one of the properties you mentioned had already in your, you sent an overview out a few weeks ago. And you mentioned that there may not be the need for the city to pay some of the copper replaced line at one of the locations. Is that included in that? Is that assumption in this?
Yeah, so what we have in front of you is kind of a worst-case scenario. Neither of these two locations, as Ryan mentioned, actually found lead problems here. If there were lead found, it would be a city responsibility per the Eagle mandate that, that Ryan mentioned. Since there wasn't any lead found, this is something that definitely we want to get corrected. But in a, in a normal scenario, these costs would, would be primarily borne by the property owner because the, the city doesn't own the water services other than this unique, you know, mandate from Eagle. So what, what we would want to do is, is get your blessing on, on the worst-case scenario and then work with those property owners to say, hey, we would like to fix this problem with you. You know, can we come up with a way to pay for it?
Okay, so that's, that's really good news that there were no lead goosnicks or connections found from the prior excavation, which was covered under E three. And I'm assuming that's because that's a newer, and I think that's worth noting that that's a newer installation, a newer water main. And there was some, some date in either the seventies or early eighties where they could no longer use lead connections, if I'm right, my memory serves me correct. That could bode well better when we get into future projects that have newer water main construction is a point I'd like to make.
For sure. Yep, there, there's an era that we knew they were being used, and there's an era that we knew they were not being used. And then there's a gray area where they were kind of being used sometimes, and I think this falls in that gray area that we really wanted to check. On the other side of things, Campbell Road falls in that area that we're pretty sure most of, if not all of those services have some lead and are going to need to be replaced.
Sure, and a lot of that you know, circa early fifties. Campbell. Anyways, enough of that. We have, any other further questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
For John, do we know what addresses those connected services are?
Yeah, that, that is in the change order. So eight oh eight, eight ten, eight forty, and eight forty-four are the two pairs that are shared.
Thank you.
Okay, any other further questions? If none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Lewis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo? Leo?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yeah.
And Truster?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Next item, Oval Beach pass fees.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Erin, can you find out where that chatter is coming from and maybe mute that? If that's possible.
Elam. Elam.
Find Elam.
I don't see that he's sharing sound.
His mic is not muted, so it's okay. So Oval Beach, non-resident fee. The city council had discussed this at a previous meeting and took formal action to increase the seasonal pass from fifty to sixty dollars. However, in subsequent conversations, council decided to put a working group together to study the, the day pass fee increase or potential increase and also take another look at that non-residential seasonal pass fee and some other things related to Oval Beach with operations and, you know, areas of improvement. And so if the council wants to revert that non-resident seasonal pass fee to, back to fifty dollars, they need to take formal action, and that's why that's on the agenda today. Possible motion would be revert the Oval Beach non-resident seasonal pass fee to fifty dollars for twenty twenty-one.
So we can approach this by either having a discussion before or after the motion. I guess we leave it open either way, so. So whoever wants to step to the plate, either can.
Eric?
That's.
Yeah, I've got a few questions, and I don't know if Peter's on, can help us with, with this. Do we have an idea if we can do pass or increase the day pass? Do we have the capabilities? With credit cards, et cetera, et cetera. You know, is it feasible to, to raise the day pass by a modest amount, or is it just impractical?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know that Peter's on the call, but I've had that discussion with Peter and other members of staff, including Linda and Scott Herbert. And so staff's recommendation is to not increase it by a small incremental amount to like twelve dollars because making change is going to be a bear. And then that would probably force people to use credit cards, and that's really slow. And so if you were to increase it, we would, we would say go to like, go to fifteen bucks just to make cash handling easier. That's kind of the position that staff took. That twelve bucks was just going to cause more trouble than it was worth.
Thanks.
Any other comments from council? Holly?
I, I would just repeat that I, I think I would like to see us do a Parks and Trail Committee. I think that we have a bigger issue with all of the parkland that the city of Sagatuck basically subsidizes for the greater community. And, you know, we can't really even afford to build bathrooms, but if you're climbing the stairs at Mount Baldy, that's courtesy of Sagatuck taxpayers. If you're dropping anchor at out at the Cove, if, you know, you're walking the trails behind Park Street. I, I do think it's part of a bigger issue that we need to have a parks and trail approach. And that we need to be thinking about how we can fund bathrooms, and I don't know if it's a tri-community approach or what, but I think it's a conversation that we need to have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Obviously, Holly and I have talked about this because we wrote a couple of emails about this as far as our working group on Oval Beach. And I think as part of our strategic planning meeting that we're planning in May, you know, we definitely want to see a Parks and Rec board instead of a tree board, or, you know, we just need, we need more focus on some fundraising efforts for our parks. And that's more of a longer-term thing that we, you know, start coming up with some other funding options. Because little old Sagatuck is having a hard time paying for all of these parks that we have, including Oval Beach. So, you know, I, I don't think we should raise the, the non-resident seasonal pass to sixty dollars. I like it reverting back to fifty dollars, but we do need to come up with some other funding ideas. And that would, you know, be part of our strategic planning that we need to do in May.
I do believe Ryan was contemplating putting that on the projects list, were you not, Ryan? Did you have that item on there?
I do.
Yeah, okay, good, thanks. And we can maybe get into a little bit more detail about that at, at that time. I think we all have some comments and, and ideas, but I don't know, it's relative to, you know, I like the longer-term approach. You know, it is, this is more the short term, like this year. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to revert the old beach non-resident seasonal pass fee to fifty dollars for two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Lauren, I'm sorry, missed you on your comment. You want to? Any more comments?
No, I don't know if we can make a decision right now on whether we want to increase the day pass. I think that could be part of the motion. Is that true, Ryan, if we could make that part of the motion and get that done or no? We need to do that at a separate meeting.
I would prefer to do that as a new motion, but I mean, because the public hasn't been informed, we'd, we'd consider that aspect.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, so.
So, you know, now we're in a situation where we're about to reverse ourselves potentially, yet with a funding issue and paying for the parks. So, you know, but we're not going to raise the, the day pass at this point. It just seems like if, you know, we, we need to fund these parks. We need to be fair to everyone. I, I think we need to plan here rather than keep doing actions and then reverting, reversing them. So, I mean, what's, when are we going to take this up again?
But we don't have a plan. So it's one thing, it, one thing, I think, increasing rates. If you have a, a specific plan to present to the public, we're putting in restrooms at Mount Ballhead and cleaning up the top of Mount Ballhead. We're putting in a, expanding or improving the beach house at Oval Beach. We're doing a paving project. We're doing something relative to parks. I think just willy-nilly saying, let's increase two bucks and just throw it into the general fund to pay for parks, you know. And I also think that last year we had a significant windfall because of COVID at the Oval Beach. I think our increase in revenues out there was close to two hundred thousand dollars, if I recall, something like that. We don't know if that's going to be there again this year or whether it's not. So I, I'm all for looking at rates. If we have something specific we're going to fund and something that we can share with the public, that this is what this is targeted for. And I think that's part of our strategic discussions also. And that's what I was thinking, the longer-term approach. So, but that's my comment. So I, I'm for leaving things the way they are for this, for this year. And, and we'll have a better idea what our actual revenues are going to be generating out there to determine if twenty twenty COVID was an off year, or if it's something that looks like it's going to be more consistent going forward. From a revenue standpoint. So those are my comments. So anyone else want to jump in?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, I do agree with you. I think that, you know, I'm, I'm not ashamed to admit that we might have plunged forward on this rate increase without due consideration of the, of the whole. And I, I think we should revert back to where we were until we can present our citizens with a plan and a rationale for any increases and, and, and a plan with fairness to residents and non-residents alike.
Mr. Mayor, this is Chris.
Yes, Chris.
I agree also with you and, and council member Truster. And when this came up, big, big shout out to Lauren who did the numbers for us. I think we do have to look long-term, and I think it was kind of a rush, and I'm, I'm happy with the motion as it stands.
So are we going to have a committee that's going to take this up then? Are we going to have a Parks Committee to take this up? Or are we going to have a Oval Beach Committee to take this up and present a plan?
I think, Scott, that that's on, yeah, I think that's on Ryan's. I think, Scott, that that's on, yeah, I think that's on Ryan's list when we sit down and talk at the strategic session, work session. And I think it's, I think it's a a viable viable option. But, you know, without a project, without, you know, a short term, you know, intermediate plan, long term plan, whatever, we don't know if $2 is enough or $3 or $4 or $5, you know, so. Any other comments? If none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Truster?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yeah.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
And Beckett?
Yes. Yes, okay, motion carried unanimously. The Oval Beach fees will stay as they were in 2020 for season 2021. Next item, event guidelines for COVID, Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Place this item on the agenda because I just want to tee up a conversation for perhaps a a future meeting in in early April or sometime in April. And it's related to to public events and and COVID. So, you know, the state of Michigan continues to to issue the emergency orders and and changes quite often. Currently, as it stands, with public gatherings, we can have up to 300 people masking and social distancing required. The city approved some special events for 2021 at your at your last meeting. So groups are being creative and and how they're going about their events, which is which is awesome. But, you know, with some of your your events that have historically drawn large crowds, such as the Fourth of July events and the the Venetian, you know, call me crazy, I won't be offended if if you do. But I would say that, you know, likely those may not be possible in 2021. And that's kind of a kind of a crystal ball question. But the reason that staff is bringing this to council's attention at this time is because, you know, we're starting to get questions from lodging establishments. You know, they're calling staff to see whether those events are gonna take place. Got a call from Lieutenant Ennsfield about staffing the the events with Water Patrol and and all the other emergency services that would need to be in place, including Water Patrol and city staff as well, you know, we there's and and the organizations that put on the events themselves, including, you know, their fireworks vendors. So anyone that's been involved with the planning an event like this knows how much time and effort goes into it. And so I just wanted to to get the conversation started. I know it could be a difficult one, but, you know, I think it's it benefits everyone if if we do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, you know, Ryan, I think it's a a good discussion to have. And one of the things that I was just thinking about is just fireworks in general. I feel like we can do that in a socially distanced way, whether you're in your cars or you're, you know, gathering in small groups at homes. Maybe there's gathering spots where we wouldn't be okay with, you know, 300 plus people gathering in one park. But I'm just hoping that there's a way that we can still do like a fireworks, but maybe we can't do the tent for Venetian. I don't know. I just, I hope that we can discuss this a little bit.
Okay, thanks, Lauren. Any other comments?
Well.
Sorry, go ahead. Chris, were you first?
Yes, I agree with Lauren. I think I think it's good that we always have it on the table to know because everybody's had to adapt restaurants, lodging and everything kind of at the the drop of a hat. So I think we keep the discussion going. We keep it open. I don't think right now we're at the place where we can say absolutely not that's gonna happen. I appreciate people wanting to know, but nobody knows. So thanks for having the discussion early and let's continue to have it.
Yeah.
Right.
Mayor.
Yes, Scott.
Yeah, I I agree. I, you know, we unfortunately, this has to be day by day. I mean, state of Michigan's been over 15% positivity since the 28th. Allegan County, as of yesterday, is over 16% positive. And I don't think anybody expected this second surge, you know, with people getting vaccinated. So I think we're just gonna have to play it day by day and really stay in close contact with the health department.
Good, good with those comments. Any other? Yes?
Mark, I'd agree with with Lauren that we could hope to maybe have some fireworks events. One of the one of the complications is that particularly the Venetian fireworks, of course, is paid for by the Venetian festival and it's it's costly, so you'd have to figure out some way of of raising that kind of money. But it would be nice to to plan toward the possibility of having fireworks at least one time during the summer and work out the logistics of how we could do that safely.
Correct, because there's, there's a lot more going into the the Fourth of July fireworks than just the council saying, hey, let's keep it open. It's a possibility because you have to coordinate with Douglas, have to coordinate with the the fire department. Certainly have to coordinate with someone who's gonna help pay for it or pay for it. So I just think that we can think through this, think about this a little bit more and and pick up this conversation next month at one of our meetings or workshops. And I think the business community appreciates us not just pulling the plug 100% this early.
Right.
Okay, any other comments regarding this item? Okay, thanks for bringing that up, Ryan. This, another opportunity now for public to address council. So if you wish to address council, please ask to be recognized and indicate your name and the community in which you reside. Anybody out there wish to address council? Aaron, see anyone there?
Crickets, sir.
Pardon?
Crickets, nobody.
Crickets, oh, I get it, crickets. All right, all right, we'll close the public comment portion. Any council comments?
Mayor, this is Garn. Yeah, just want to let you all know that the household hazardous waste day communications have begun to be distributed all over the place in each municipality and we've already received three signups. So look for that information on each municipality's webpage through the E-list, on Facebook. And then there'll be an article in the community commercial record as well next week. So that information's out and we're ready to go. And Chris, you can bring a small air conditioner if it has Freon. How's that?
Yay, yay.
Okay, other council members? Lauren? Okay, Holly?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, Chris?
I'm good.
All right, Ken?
No, no, thanks.
Right, Scott, I was gonna call on you, but you may want to comment on what I'm going to mention, so.
I don't know what it is.
You'll find out. Last Wednesday, between the city manager and myself, we set up a a meeting out at the Outdoor Discovery Center. And I asked Ryan and Scott from Public Works and Scott Dean to attend with me. I do know a lot of people out there. And so I thought it would be a good thing to, an opportunity to introduce these these individuals to the staff out there, got a tour of the facility and learned a lot about the work they do with invasive species and about the project with the Kalamazoo Waterway. I believe that there may be some information forthcoming that Ryan will be sharing with council. We got into the the most recent woolly bug or whatever it's called. And so I just wanted to bring council up to date on that. So Scott and Ryan, maybe I'll leave it. You guys can comment on that too.
I'll just say, you know, thank you for arranging it. I think it was a great connection with with the guys at the Discovery Center. I think they've got a lot of great ideas. I think there's tons of opportunity for collaboration with them. And just a shout out to John Vanderbeek for taking the initiative to start looking for this invasive species in the area around Mount Baldy. So I think it was it was some time spent and a connection really well made with the guys at the Discovery Center. And I'll turn it over to Ryan.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for arranging that meeting. Certainly envisioned some great partnerships with that organization. And I should also mention on a on a personal front, so thrilled that they have their preschool program there, their pre preschool program there. Three, get a three-year-old to play out in the mud. I'm I'm digging it. So I've I've been told if I can get on the list now, I may get a chance to have Vivian in there in in two years. So, I mean, really impressed with the the facilities and and staff. And, yeah, I look forward to working with that group.
We'll take that as a commitment of employment, Ryan. So, all right, that's about it. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Louis, seconded by Dean, adjourn the meeting. Roll call, please.
Louis?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yeah.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
And Beckett?
Yes, thanks, everybody, for taking time out of your schedules for this special meeting. And everyone, enjoy the upcoming Easter holiday. Thank you.
Thanks, all.